Good evening. The eighty-eighth regular meeting of the seventy-third term of your Baltimore City Council is now called to order. As a reminder for folks who are joining us today, please ensure your electronic devices are turned off or at a minimum placed on silence. So you do not disrupt tonight's proceedings. At this time, I'll ask everyone to please stand and join me in stating the pledge of allegiance. Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Tonight, I'm pleased and eager and happy. You know, many times when we talk about our young folks, it's always talking about some of the issues, the concerns, the problems that they might cause around our city or in our community. But tonight, we're going to talk about some amazing young folks that have done the city really, really well. And that is the three A North two regional champions from the Patterson High School. It's the boys soccer team. If you guys could come on up, come on, give it up.
We'll have something to come down here.
And you should just come across. And some of you guys come down here. Madam Principal and Coach, if you guys could come up as well. You're good, right here, sure. Now, who has a camera for Patterson? One of the coaches or principals, you have a camera? There we go. All right. So a lot of times, again, when we're talking about the young folks, we talk about it. Unfortunately, we see it on the news. It's negative, negative, negative. But we understand and know that young folks all throughout our city are doing amazing things. These individuals that stand before you, in Principal April Myrick, Coach Joshua Ober, Coach Messicar Wingate, and Coach Kevin Gondat-Galdemes represented the city really well. And I'll tell you how, they're back-to-back city champions, right? And not only did they go and beat, to become the three A North Regional Champions, but they went to fight in a huge dueling where they went into overtime and lost on penalty kicks to one of our neighbors in the county. Now, obviously, we talk about sports, particularly Baltimore City sports, high school sports, a lot on this council. And we talk about the disparities that our young folks face when they go up against competition outside of the city of Baltimore. With these individuals that stand before you today are true test of time, of grit, of perseverance, and for you to make it to that level from Baltimore City, from a soccer perspective. I want you to know that each and every member of the City Council is so, so proud of you and look forward to what you do, Coach, and all your players next season. So please give a huge round of applause again for the members of the three A North Regional Champions. And now I'm going to ask Councilman Zekon, if you could please come stand with me. We have a small token appreciation from the City Council. Mr. Coach, you can stand up here and receive this. And it reads, "The City Council of Baltimore Resolution. Be hereby known to all that the City Council of Baltimore offers its sincerest congratulations to Patterson High School in recognition of Patterson Soccer Team for being both city, school, district champions, and three A North two Regional Champions 2024. The entire membership extends its best wishes on this memorable occasion and directs this resolution to be presented to you on this day, eighteenth of November, 2024. Signed by myself, City Council President Nick J. Mosby, and all the other members of the City Council." Please give another round of applause. Say Patterson on three, one, two, three. Patterson. Thank you, guys, very much. Appreciate it. At this time, Madam Clerk, if you could please call the roll.
President Mosby, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Torrance, Burnett, Bullock, Costello, Stokes, Ramos. Mr. President, we have a quorum.
Thank you so much, Madam Clerk. We will now proceed with adoption of the journals. Madam Clerk?
Mr. President, the journal for the November fourth, twenty twenty-four regular meeting proceedings are on the council member's desk.
Without objection, the journal will now be approved. Hearing and seeing none, the journal is now adopted. Bill signed by the mayor can be found at the beginning of page two on tonight's agenda. Madam Clerk, if you could please go into executive nominations.
EA two four dash zero two six one, Doris Minor Terrell, Member, Community Reinvestment and Reparations Commission, District twelve.
This nomination will be assigned to rules and legislative oversight. Madam Clerk, next bill.
EA two four dash zero two six two, Leland Shelton, Member, Baltimore City Inclusionary Housing Board, District six.
This nomination will be assigned to rules and legislative oversight. Madam Clerk, next bill.
EA two four dash zero two six three, Shelley Halsted, Member, Baltimore City Inclusionary Housing Board, Member, District nine.
This nomination will be assigned to rules and legislative oversight. Madam Clerk, next bill.
That's it.
Okay, thank you so much. Now we're on consent calendar. You can find the consent calendar in section A, the back of tonight's agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar? It's been moved in probably second all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, the consent calendar is now approved. We'll now move to bills on second reader. Before we do, I would like to recognize Chairman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move, we read short titles for second and third reader for the duration of the meeting.
Without objection, we'll be in short titles for the remainder of tonight's meeting. Hearing and seeing none, we are in short titles for the remainder of tonight's meeting. Madam Clerk, if you could please call the first bill.
Yes. City Council Bill two four dash zero five six eight, Community Relations Commission Powers and Duties Complaint Period.
At this time, I'd like to recognize Chair of the Committee, Chairman Stokes, floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. Committee held a hearing on November the seventh for Council Bill twenty four dash zero five six eight, Community Relations Commission Powers and Duties Complaint Period. I move the bill favorable.
Is there a second? It's been moved in probably second all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, this.
Mr. President, I move to invoke Rule twelve one for same-day advancement from second reader to third reader.
Is there a second? At this time, Madam Clerk, if you could please call the roll. This is to invoke Council Rule twelve dash one for same-day advancement. Madam Clerk?
Yep. President Mosby, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Torrance, Burnett, Bullock, Costello, Stokes, Glo- Brummels.
Uh, we're gonna have to, uh, folks, I'm gonna need you to say up or down on this. So Madam Clerk, if you please start the roll.
President Mosby, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Conway.
Hold on, guys, hold on. Uh, uh, council member, floor is yours.
Yeah, point of order, Mr. President. We need twelve votes in order to advance on the same day, and there are only eleven members present.
I'm counting, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven. That's correct. He's right.
Yeah, so number four.
Thank you for pointing that out. Um, so we have voted out on second reader. Is that right, Mr. Parliamentarian? Are we good to go to the next bill? We can't, it's same day, but we can vote out for second reader. We're good there, is what I'm saying. Yeah, okay. So Madam Clerk, if you please call the next bill. Thank you, Mr. Councilman.
City Council Bill two four dash zero five eight four, Baltimore City Government Entities Language Access.
At this time, the body would like to recognize Chair of the Committee, Chairman Conway, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. The government, uh, the Public Safety and Government Operations Committee meant to hear this bill on November thirteenth, and it was voted favorably with amendments. There are committee amendments on my colleague's desk, and I move the amendments favorably.
Is there a second? It's been moved in probably second all in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, the amendments are passed. Uh, Mr. Chair, the floor is yours.
I move the bill favorably as amended.
It's been moved in probably second all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, the bill will be printed for third reading. Madam Clerk, if you could please call the next bill.
City Council Bill two four dash zero five five four, Building Fire and Related Codes Corrective Amendment.
At this time, the body would like to recognize Chair of the Committee, uh, Chair of another committee, Chairman Costello, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. The committee held a matter, uh, hearing on this matter on November seventh. I move the bill favorably.
It's been moved in probably second all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, this bill will be printed for third reading. Madam Clerk, next bill.
City Council Bill two three dash zero four five five, Zoning Conditional Use Conversion of a Single Family Dwelling Unit to Four-Dwelling Units in the R eight Zoning District, eleven twenty-seven North Carolina Street.
At this time, I would like to recognize Chairman Costello, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. Committee held multiple hearings on this matter. Other findings of fact on my colleague's desk, I move the findings of fact.
It's been moved in probably second all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Findings of facts are now adopted. Mr. Chair, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the bill favorably.
Is there a second? It's been moved in probably second all in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, uh, this bill will be printed for third reading. Madam Clerk, next bill.
City Council Bill two four dash zero four nine six, Zoning Conditional Use Conversion of a Single Family Dwelling Unit to Three-Dwelling Units in the R eight Zoning District, Variances twenty-nine oh four, twenty-nine ten, and twenty-nine fourteen, Parkwood Avenue.
At this time, the council would like to recognize Chair of the Committee, Chairman Costello, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. There are amendments on my colleague's desk. We did hold multiple hearings on this matter. I move the amendments favorably.
Is there a second? It's been moved in probably second all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, the amendments are adopted. Mr. Chair, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, there are findings of fact on my colleague's desk. At this time, I move findings of fact.
Is there a second? It's been moved in probably second all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, findings of facts are now adopted. Mr. Chair, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the bill favorably as amended.
It's been moved in probably second all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, uh, this bill will be printed for third reading. Madam Clerk, next bill.
City Council Bill two four dash zero five one seven, Rezoning fifteen hundred, fifteen oh two, and fifteen oh eight, De Soto Road.
At this time, Chairman Costello has the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. There is an amendment to this bill. We held multiple hearings on this matter. At this time, I move the amendment.
It's been moved in probably second all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, Mr. Chair, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. There are findings of fact on my colleague's desk. At this time, I move the findings of fact.
It's been moved in probably second all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. Findings of facts are now adopted. Mr. Chair, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the bill favorably as amended.
Is there a second? It's been moved in probably second all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, bill is adopted, will be printed for third reading. Madam Clerk, next bill.
City Council Bill two four dash zero five eight zero, Rezoning nine oh one Asquith Street.
At this time, I would like to recognize Chair of the Committee, Chairman Costello, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. Committee held multiple hearings on this matter. There are findings of fact on my colleague's desk. At this time, I move the findings of fact.
It's been moved in probably second all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, findings of facts are now adopted. Mr. Chair, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the bill favorably.
Is there a second? It's been moved in probably second all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, this bill will be printed for third reading. Madam Clerk, next bill.
City Council Bill two four dash zero five nine six, Sale of Property, fourteen hun- Hundred, Lenon Hall Street.
At this time, I would like to recognize Chair of the Committee, Chairman Costello, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. Committee held multiple hearings on this matter. I move the bill favorably.
Is there a second? It's been moved in probably second all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, this bill will be printed for third reading. Madam Clerk, next bill.
City Council Bill two four dash zero five nine seven, City Property Renaming Riverside Park Pool to the Congressman Elijah E. Cummings Community Pool.
I would like to recognize Chair of the Committee.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to take a moment to thank my colleagues for this renaming, which is one small token of honor for the late Congressman Elijah E. Cummings. We held multiple hearings on this matter, Mr. President. I move the bill favorably.
Is there a second? It's been moved in probably second all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, this bill will be printed for third reading. Madam Clerk, next bill.
City Council Bill two four dash zero five nine eight, Rezoning twelve twenty-three through twelve twenty-nine, Argyle.
At this time, I would like to recognize Chair of the Committee, Chairman Costello, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. Committee held multiple hearings on this matter. There are, there is an amendment on my colleague's desk. At this time, I move the amendment.
Is there a second? It's been moved in probably second all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, amendment is adopted. Mr. Chair, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. There are findings of fact on my colleague's desk. At this time, I move the findings of fact.
It's been moved in probably second all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, the findings of facts are now adopted. Mr. Chair, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the bill favorably as amended.
Is there a second? It's been moved in probably second all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, this bill will be printed for third reading as amended. Madam Clerk?
City Council Bill two four dash zero six zero zero, Zoning Conditional Use of a Single Family Dwelling Unit to Three-Dwelling Units in the R eight Zoning District, Variances twenty-one oh six, McCullough Street.
Body would like to recognize Chair of the Committee, Chairman Costello, the floor is yours.
Uh, Mr. President, I need a quick moment on this one. Mr. President, there are findings of fact on my colleague's desk. At this time, I move the findings of fact.
Is there a second? It's been moved in probably second all in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, the findings of facts are now adopted. Mr. Chair, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the bill favorably.
It's been moved in probably second all in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, this bill will be printed for third reading. Uh, we do not have any same-day advance bills tonight because, as, um, Councilmember Dorsey pointed out, and, um, we are only eleven deep as opposed to twelve. Uh, so at this time, we'll now turn to bills on third reading for final passage. Madam Clerk, if you could please call the first bill.
City Council Bill two three dash zero three six seven, Prohibition Gas Power Debris Removal Equipment. President Mosby.
No.
Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Torrance, Burnett, Bullock, Costello, Stokes, Ramos.
This bill is approved. Madam Clerk, if you could please call the next bill.
City Council Bill two four dash zero five zero seven, Study and Report Infrastructure in Urban Meadows. President Mosby, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Torrance, Burnett, Bullock, Costello, Stokes, Ramos.
This bill is approved. Madam Clerk, next bill.
City Council Bill two four dash zero five one six, Zoning Conditional Use Parking Lot Principal Use, Twelve eleven Jefferson Street. President Mosby, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Torrance, Burnett, Bullock, Costello, Stokes, Ramos.
This bill is approved. Madam Clerk, next bill.
City Council Bill two four dash zero five three three, Zoning Conditional Use Conversion of a Single Family Dwelling Unit to Four-Dwelling Units in the R eight Zoning District, Variances fifteen North Stricker Street. President Mosby, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Torrance, Burnett, Bullock, Costello, Stokes, Ramos.
This bill is approved. Madam Clerk, next bill.
City Council Bill two four dash.
One second, some unreadiness. Uh, Councilman Dorsey, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, for Council Bill twenty-four oh five four four, I make a motion that this bill be held over to the next council meeting.
Well, she hasn't read it in yet, uh, but we can take that motion. Um, there's a motion, is there a second? It's moved in probably second, and all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. Um, the ayes have it. Mr. Parliamentarian, we only need a quorum. Uh, we only need the fifty, fifty-one percent. We're good. Um, so it will be held over to the next meeting. Um, I guess to give you additional time with the community. Um, with that, uh, uh, there are some community residents here. Uh, I guess you're going to talk to, uh, Councilman, uh, Dorsey. We appreciate, uh, you participating. Obviously, you can't, uh, speak or anything tonight, but thank you for coming out. Truly appreciate it. Would like to recognize a former council member, Jody Landers. We always like to recognize council members when they return back to City Hall. So thank you so much for coming to us. Please clap it up for Councilmember Jody Landers. Council members, please clap it up for a former council member. Thank you, Councilman, uh, Landers. At this time, Madam Clerk, thank you, uh, for, for that, Councilman Dorsey. At this time, Madam Clerk, if you could please call the next bill.
City Council Bill two four dash zero five seven three, Repel of Ordinance zero four eight two four, Plan Unit Development nineteen oh one Light Street, nineteen twenty-one Light Street, Bed of Johnson Street, and Block nineteen forty-seven Lot One. President Mosby, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Torrance, Burnett, Bullock, Costello, Stokes, Ramos.
This bill is approved. Madam Clerk, next bill.
City Council Bill two four dash zero five eight three, The Twenty Twenty-four Comprehensive Master Plan for the City of Baltimore. President Mosby, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Torrance, Burnett, Bullock, Costello, Stokes, Ramos.
This bill is approved. Please, uh, note that there is one, uh, nay vote, uh, and that is Councilwoman Ramos. Madam Clerk, please call the next bill. This bill is approved.
City Council Bill two four dash zero five eight six, Urban Renewal, Old Town Mall Amendment eleven. President Mosby, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Torrance, Burnett, Bullock, Costello, Stokes, Ramos.
This bill is approved. Madam Clerk, next bill.
City Council Bill two four dash zero five eight eight, Area of Special Signage Control Designation Stadium Area. President Mosby, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Torrance, Burnett, Bullock, Costello, Stokes, Ramos.
This bill is approved. Madam Clerk, next bill.
City Council Bill two four dash zero five eight nine, Rezoning six oh one West West Street Lot N, six sixteen West West Street Lot NN, and seven oh one West Austin Street Lot O. President Mosby, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Torrance, Burnett, Bullock, Costello, Stokes, Ramos.
This bill is approved. Madam Clerk, next bill.
City Council Bill two four dash zero five nine zero, Zoning Sign Regulations, C five DC Zoning District Amendment. President Mosby, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Torrance, Burnett, Bullock, Costello, Stokes, Ramos.
This bill is approved. Madam Clerk, next bill.
City Council Bill two four dash zero five nine one, Rezoning one twenty-one Riverside Road. President Mosby, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Torrance, Burnett, Bullock, Costello, Stokes, Ramos.
This bill is approved. Uh, Madam Clerk, next bill.
City Council Bill two four dash zero six zero one, Property Taxes, Special Rate for Vacant and Abandoned Property. President Mosby, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Torrance, Burnett, Bullock, Costello, Stokes, Ramos.
This bill is approved. Um, how that bill did not come with a whole lot of fanfare. You know, obviously, this puts Baltimore in a different perspective of dealing with, uh, the vacancy that we've seen throughout East and West Baltimore for decades upon decades upon decades. I would like to thank, uh, Councilwoman Odette Ramos, as well as Chairman, uh, Costello for working with my office and the administration to ensure that we put a bill that we could be proud of, of all the hard work that was done down with the Maryland General Assembly, uh, to ensure that, again, uh, we're tackling vacancies on a holistic level. Uh, with that, um, at this time, we're going to turn it over to committee announcements. Are there any committee announcements? Hearing and seeing none, uh, are there any regular announcements that are out there? Uh, Councilman, Chairman Conway, do you have some regular announcements? You don't? I believe you do. We're going to go to, uh, first, uh, before, the, the most important regular, well, there's two really important. No, all of them are important. Uh, but one touches and two touches this body a little different than the other ones. Uh, and that is the passing of Mary Pat Clark. Uh, she was a, um, a stellar advocate, uh, for the voiceless. Uh, she consistently shone light, uh, on the dark, uh, and she was always a person, uh, that was going to speak up and speak out on what was right and always ensure that folks knew what was wrong, whether she was on the prevailing side, uh, or, or, uh, the side that ultimately failed. She always spoke with her gut and with her heart. So the city will be truly missed. Uh, she had the ability of serving as City Council President, as well as City Councilwoman for quite some time. Uh, there's a couple of members, myself, uh, Councilwoman Sharon Green Middleton, and Eric Costello, who had the opportunity of serving directly with, uh, MPC. Uh, I served, I, I shared some neighborhoods with her when I was in the seventh district, uh, and she was, uh, in the fourteenth, in the fourteenth district. So, um, I've had the ability of working with her hand in hand, uh, and she will sorely, sorely be missed throughout the city of Baltimore. At this time, I'm going to turn it over to Councilwoman Odette Ramos. If you would like to provide any remarks concerning, uh, Councilwoman MPC.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, obviously, this is a, a big loss for our city, obviously, for her family. Um, and, uh, she certainly was a bit, a friend and mentor to me, um, as I stepped into her very big shoes, um, to fill. Uh, I first met her when she ran for mayor in nineteen ninety-five. And, uh, I just walked into the campaign office, and she was there with Linda Aberhart, and they just scooped me up and, you know, taught me campaigning. Campaigning one oh one with Mary Pat Clark, um, you know, going door to door, touching people, um, really making an impact on people's lives. Everybody's got a Mary Pat Clark story. Uh, she touched everybody in our city. Um, I'm so glad that this body was able to give her some flowers, um, prior to passing, uh, that she was able to, um, slide down the biggest slide of the playground that we named after her as well, uh, showing, uh, the energy that she's had, um, her entire life and her love, uh, her love of Baltimore. Um, her funeral arrangements, uh, the funeral is on this coming Saturday, um, at Cathedral Mary Our Queen at ten thirty AM, um, and then there'll be a reception afterwards. Uh, but we will certainly miss her. Uh, she is a legend. She, um, you know, will be continuing to look down on us and making sure we're doing the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Councilman Stokes, Chairman Stokes.
I'd like to go out to Mary Pat's office, but I did have some history with, with the councilwoman.
Oh, yeah.
When you had three councilpeople per district in here. My brother Edwin Johnson, who served with her, and Nathan Herbie. So I had a lot of history going back with NDC two, their political organization. So again, my condolences go out to your family. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Uh, anyone else to talk about MPC? Uh, Councilman Dorsey?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd just like to tell two things about Mary Pat. Um, she was a household name, like, my whole life. I, I didn't know, you know, I was not very, I was not engaged politically until I was engaged politically to go, I think I wanted to be a city council member, right? So it was at that point, I was, oh, that's why she was a household name, because she was so much to so many. Um, and it was very shortly after I decided to run for city council that I just started putting myself out there. Um, and I showed up to, uh, a fish fry, an annual fundraiser event at nine oh one arts. Um, and, and I got this opportunity to, like, step aside with her and have a little chat with her. And, um, and, and, and I told her I was going to run for city council, and I just made this decision. And it was like two years out from the election. And, um, she kind of had this just like casual conversation with me for a few minutes. And then she was just like, what'd you say your name is again? Um, like, nothing, you know, uh, and, and I said Dorsey, and she said, that sounds like an electable name. And it was just so casual and just like nonchalant that it, like, really welcomed me into her spirit, and that's always stuck with me. And so she always felt incredibly approachable and reasonable to me. Um, so when I made it a priority to, uh, put forth Complete Streets as like my number one initiative in my first term, um, knowing that she had distinguished herself as being the first person in the city council to really introduce that concept and language of complete streets, I didn't want to step on her toes, but I felt perfectly comfortable at ease going to her and saying, hey, Mary Pat, is it okay for me to carry this torch? Can I pick up where you've left off here and run with this thing? I don't want to step on your toes, but this is something that I think that we could go many steps further with. And she said, I'll back you up every step of the way. Just from the jump, she was right there with me and encouraging, um, supportive, and just, like I said, willing to pass the torch. And, uh, I'm just so thankful that I got the opportunity to serve with her in this, in this council. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Bullock?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President and colleagues. Um, in my first term, I sat over there, right next to Mary Pat Clark. And as you know, oftentimes, her phone would go off, and that was one of our favorite things that would happen. and that was one of our favorite things that would happen. Um, but what I will also say is, um, I'm indebted to Mary Pat Clark in terms of even one of my staff members, one of my best staff members who does conditional services, was trained under Mary Pat Clark. She does a fantastic job. But there's another story I'll tell you. As I was talking with my staff last week, one of my staff members said, you know, I met Mary Pat when I was a young person. When Mary Pat Clark spent the night in Lexington Terrace, one of my staff members was a young person and talked about all night, um, them reading stories and, and looking at Elmo videos and things like that. So not only was she a great councilperson, but as a fellow educator, she was somebody who really believed in education, but also touching our young people. So it's very fitting that we're able to name a playground after her because it's so, uh, part of what her, uh, her mission was. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, Councilmember Torrance?
Thank you, Mr. President. While I never served with MPC, a personal note, my family was homeless. Um, when I was ten years old, MPC got my mother housing